Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Good evening all. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor of Coquitlam and I'll be chairing tonight's public hearing and council meeting. On behalf of council, I want to welcome everyone here to the public hearing. It's a public hearing into the bylaws that will be read to you in a few moments by the city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw, after which the floor will be opened to anyone in the room who wants to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. We've got some people have pre-registered to speak and those that have pre-registered will speak first and then we will open the floor to anyone else in the room. I stress to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and want to hear your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. But there are some rules. This is not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, staff, or those in the audience who may be opposed to your particular point of view. So we ask that you please restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw. Be as brief and concise as possible. We ask that speakers respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone gets a chance to speak. If you've got some more good stuff after five minutes, you can always get to the back of the line and we'll hear you again as long as it's good stuff. I ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. And to that end, to make sure that everyone feels comfortable, we ask that we have no cheering, no booing, no jeering, no clapping of any of the presentations made tonight. We want everyone to feel comfortable at the microphone. We know that that can be daunting. As chair of this hearing, council, all of us, ask that everyone please respect these rules, that I have the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive or becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. Please note, after the council, after each item is adjourned and after the public hearing, council can receive no further information on that item until we've made our decision. So if you have some written documentation that you want to be part of the permanent record, you have to hand it in to the clerk's table before we adjourn that item. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we'll have a council meeting. We'll convene a council meeting in order that council can give consideration to the items on the public hearing agenda along with some other items. However, if during the public hearing, council requests further information related to an item, consideration of that item can be deferred pending receipt of the requested information. I will now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the bylaws on tonight's agenda and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, your worship. First item this evening is an application to amend the zoning bylaw in order to rezone the property at 1041 Quadling Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential. This is bylaw number 4634.
Evening, your worship and members of council. My name is Kim Davlar, planning technician for the City of Coquitlam. I'm here tonight to present item number one, a rezoning application for 1041 Quadling Avenue. The subject site is located on the north side of Quadling Avenue, west of Marmont Street. The site and the surrounding area is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential within the Millardville Neighborhood Plan. Zoning on the site and to the west, east, and south is RS1 One Family Residential and zoning to the north is RT1 Two Family Residential. The site is presently contains a single-family dwelling unit. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to RT1 Two Family Residential in conformance with the city's official community plan to facilitate subdivision of the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. As a result, staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw 4634.
Thank you, Ms. Davlar. Our first speaker tonight is Jurit Augla at 6970 Dunblane Avenue in Burnaby. And that's the applicant. Did I get the name close to right?
Gurgit.
Oh, Gurgit.
Fair enough. It can be tough to pronounce.
There you go.
Yes, I'm the owner of 1041 Quadling. I actually brought my Realtor friend with me, J.D. Perry, who will be doing most of the speaking on my behalf as he's familiar with the property as well. Basically, as Kim has alluded, we're just looking to develop the 1041 Quadling into two single-family lots. I'll just let J.D. Perry to take it from here. Thanks.
And our second speaker actually on the list is J.D. Perry.
We came organized.
Very well done.
Thanks, everybody. So basically, as Gurgit has mentioned, so once the two single-family lots would be created, two single-family homes would be put onto these properties, each with a secondary suite. From my understanding and from previous attendances at meetings such as this, parking has been raised as a concern as we, as you increase density in the area. So as you'll see in our, in our package and the site plan there, there's been three designated parking spots, all with access from the lane.
Sorry, just raised that you hadn't given your name and address. You did give your name. You wouldn't mind stating your address for the record.
Oh, sure. Yeah, my name is J.D. Perry. I'm the Realtor that helped Gurgit acquire this property. My address is 5547 Sussex Avenue in Burnaby. And so the intention, Gurgit's intention is to reside in one of those two new homes as his personal residence and the second one, depending on the market, I may purchase from him at the time or if it's, if the market continues to be like this, he may sell it to another party. At this point, that's pretty much all I have to say. We know that at the past meetings, there's been some discussion of perpendicular parking, which would be on the front. We're not opposed to providing that kind of alternative if that's what the council desires. But from our understanding, the lane parking was, I guess, appreciated a bit more so that way it's off the main road. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions from council. And that's the end of the list of speakers. Are there any speakers to this item? Oh, councillor Zerillo, my apologies.
Could I just see the picture, the aerial picture of the cars and the, yeah, that one. So if I could just have staff just explain to me how the parking works, like we're going to have street improvements there. So outside of the yellow box, we're going to have sidewalk and street lights now, right? Am I correct in that? That we will start the sidewalk project here?
Ms. Davlar.
Through your worship, yes, that is correct.
So looking probably just like the one behind it, the one north of it?
Yes, through the worship. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Okay, now, are there any other speakers to this item? Mr. Poy, come on up. He's on Haversley.
Good afternoon, Mayor, afternoon or evening, Mayor, city council. My name's Albert Poy. I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, B.C. I'm watching, I don't know the owners of this property, so it's nothing personal. What I'm finding again very disturbing in the southwest corner is the problem this council is creating with density. I've been coming to council, watching the density issue. Last month, I listened for over an hour while this council bragged, patted itself on the head about the density issue and only raising taxes 2.64 percent, the lowest in seven years. These density issues are raising our taxes the last five years over 20 percent. Now, now you have more density like these, developing every piece of property and cramming more people in, there's no benefit to us people who built this community, not one. In the next, this year's 2.64 percent increase, but over the next five years, I want you to consider, you people, this council, every one of you, want to raise taxes another 20 percent.
Mr. Poy, Mr. Poy, you do have to kind of stick to the project work.
I am. I'm talking about density. And that's what we're talking about, sir. Every time I speak, you try the same trick with me and I'm getting tired of it. I'm allowed to speak and I'm speaking about density and why I'm opposed to the density.
You're allowed to speak about density.
And that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Very good. Okay.
Okay, are we on the same?
Go ahead.
Yes, I know. Let's look at the congestion factor. I have not seen plans for one new road in the southwest here, even though this council has approved over 2,000 cars in the last two years being added daily to our streets. And I'm referring to Blue Mountain, Burnett, the low heat highway, Austin. There's no more planning. And then when I look at the density, I'm told, oh, it covers things, the development costs. Well, I don't see any development cost making any density less. What I see is the opposite. Let me give you an example of this density you're adding here. Since 2007, we've had three tax increases to pay for more RCMP. Doesn't make sense. I just read your five-year plan related to the density. If we're having this density, we're having more people, more houses, more suites, there's more people to pay for this. But yet, your density program keeps adding to taxes. Your excuses are not making sense when we relate to density. I could say the next of the next three, same thing for the next three applications. But I won't embarrass you because I'm more civil than you people are. But I want you to start considering the problems you're creating. I cannot get to the hospital where I have to go frequently because I cannot get past the Burnett overpass and I find that disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Thank you, your worship. Next item, item two is an application to amend the zoning bylaw in order to rezone the property 1107 Quadling Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential. This is bylaw number 4599.
Your worship and council, I'm Kim Davlar again, planning technician for the city. And I'm here tonight to present the rezoning for item number two at 1107 Quadling Avenue. The subject site is located on the north side of Quadling Avenue, east of Marmont Street. The site and surrounding area are designated Neighborhood Attached Residential in the Millardville Neighborhood Plan. Zoning on the site and to the west, east, and south is RS1 One Family Residential and zoning to the north is RS3 One Family Residential and RT1 Two Family Residential. The site is presently contains a single-family dwelling unit. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to RT1 Two Family Residential in conformance with the city's official community plan designation and to facilitate subdivision of the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending all readings to bylaw number 4599.
Thank you. Our only registered speaker, Rosemary Baker. Rosemary lives at 1117 Quadling. Quite close.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council. I'd like to speak in favor of this proposal for 1107. I live at, my name's Rosemary Baker and I'm at 1117 Quadling Avenue, so one door over. And I like the proposal that this young family, they would like to build themselves a little bit bigger of a home to accommodate their family and have an additional house there. It will revitalize our area and make it a family, bringing younger families back into the neighborhood. It'll be great to keep these people here rather than moving to another neighborhood. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time. Councillor Zerillo.
I just wanted, I just had a question from staff. I think about, about the access onto the street. This one doesn't have a lane, so we're going to have front driveways. And I think I did read either an email or in this report that it was felt by staff the 4.5-meter driveway was wide enough for cars to come down. But I am concerned that if two cars are parked in front of the garage, there's no way for the tenant to get out. And I just wanted to confirm that that 4.5 meters allows every car to come in and out even if there's two cars parked in front of the garage?
Ms. Davlar.
Through your worship, staff did review this and, and looked at technically, could, could the car maneuver from the secondary suite parking past any parked cars in the driveway and through the driveway apron? And based on their review, they proved out that it was possible on, through the technical analysis.
Because when I drew it myself, like just drew it, it didn't seem that a car could get past there. Okay, I remember reading that. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Mr. Clerk.
Next item, item three is an application to amend the zoning bylaw in order to rezone the property at 1113 Quadling Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential. This is bylaw number 4600.
Your worship and members of council, my name is Michael Dollywell, acting supervisor, development planning. Subject site is located mid-block on the north side of Quadling Avenue between Begin and Marmont Streets at 1113 Quadling Avenue. The property is 811 square meters in size and located within the Millardville Neighborhood Plan area. Zoning on the site is RS1 One Family Residential. Properties to the north are zoned RS3 One Family and RT1 Two Family. To the south, it's RS1 One Family. To the east, RT2 Two Family. And to the west, currently, it's RS1 One Family, but under application to rezone to RT1 Two Family. Subject site and the surrounding lands are all designated Neighborhood Attached Residential. Site currently contains a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting to rezone to RT1 Two Family Residential in conformance with the official community plan designation to facilitate, to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. As a result, staff are recommending second, third, fourth, and final readings to bylaw
Thank you, Michael. For this one, our, the applicant is the first speaker, Philip Christie at 1113 Quadling.
Hello, my name is Philip Christie. I live at 1113 Quadling Avenue, Coquitlam. I'd just like to say the, bring it to the council's attention, this development. We have gone around the neighborhood and spoken to all the immediate neighbors. I sent a signed foreman with all their signatures and addresses. In consulting with them, they got what we were trying to do. Our goal here is to stay in Millardville. The house we currently occupy is no longer functional for our needs, so we're looking to build a new home. And the second home, hopefully hang on to it. We'll see if that's financially possible, but in the process, we'd like to add some, a few rental, a couple rental suites as well. I'd just like to note that the current rental vacancy rate is 0.8 percent. 4 percent is considered a healthy vacancy rate, so there's, there's a real need for some new rental accommodation for people. I think we need to come up with some housing choices for people as well. If it were to remain single-family, a very large home would be built that would be very expensive. The lot on Theron sold this May for $800,000. It was just put back on the market at a million and sold within a week. So I'm looking to the future as to how my children are going to be able to afford to live in the community that they grew up in. This is plan A. I don't have a plan B, so we'd like to stay in Millardville. We'd like to provide some housing for ourselves and our children and possibly some others in the neighborhood. Everybody in the neighborhood supported it and I would ask council to support it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Rosemary, you're next. Now, are you against this one or?
My name's Rosemary Baker. I'm at 1117 Quadling Avenue, right next door to Phil and Karen Christie at 1113. They've been my neighbors for 20 years. I don't want to see them leave. They're excellent neighbors and I like what they're planning as well is to improve their housing. It's an older home, small home, to build themselves a nicer home, stay in Millardville. They really, really like the neighborhood and also help the kids out. And I like the design that they've shown me for the house plans and that it's going to fit in with the Millardville area to keep it heritage as well as with 1107. I'm in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Christine Baker. I am daughter of Rosemary Baker and I currently reside in unit number 361225 Brunette Avenue, which is the complex just down the street on Begin and Brunette. I'm up here speaking in favor of this development. We have lived in our home over 33 years. I'm currently 32, so I've been there my entire life. And I as well would like to see a revival of the neighborhood to bring in younger families. As a former renter, it was very difficult to find rental suites affordable in the area in which I wish to reside. And I have always enjoyed the Millardville area. It's very close to transit, very accessible to amenities, the Silver City and Superstore and whatever else. So I absolutely, I haven't seen any plans. I don't know what the house looks like, but I'm cool with it.
Your mother breathed a sigh of relief.
I guess so. Anyways, thank you very much.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? The third and final time. Seeing none, declare this item closed, Mr. Speaker.
Item four is an application to amend the zoning bylaw in order to rezone the property at 3417 Victoria Drive from RS2 One Family Suburban Residential to RS7 Small Village Single Family Residential. This is bylaw number 4601.
The subject site is located on the north side of Victoria Drive, west of Toronto Street and Lee Elementary School. The site is 749 square meters in size and located within the Lower Height Creek Neighborhood Plan area. Zoning on the site is currently RS2 One Family Suburban Residential. The subject site and the surrounding lands in Coquitlam to the east, west, and north are all designated Small Village Single Family. Lands to the south in Port Coquitlam are designated General Urban. The site currently contains a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RS7 Small Village Single Family in conformance with the official community plan designation to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending second, third, and fourth and final readings to bylaw 4601, 2015.
Okay, there's no registered speakers. Are there any speakers here for this item? Anybody here to speak to this item? Councillor Reed.
Thank you. There's no, I realize they don't have, but there's no lot plan showing parking and all that on these two. If there is, I don't have it. Oh, that's what I thought. And I gather it's rear lane park. Where did you find that?
Where'd you find that? Michael, you're holding out on.
I had it just in case, okay.
Nice save. So on this one, if I may, then there's not enough room behind the garage to park, to have visitor parking, right?
Through your worship, that is correct.
So we get three parking. There's going to be an extra suite, but no visitor. Thank you.
Okay, are there any speakers to this item? Oh, councillor Wilson.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify something. In RS7, are suites allowed?
Through your worship, yes, suites are permitted.
There was no mention of whether there'd be suites in these buildings or not, so I just kind of clarify if any are planned. There was no mention of whether there'd be suites in these buildings or not, so I just kind of clarify if any are planned.
I don't have the floor plans for the homes, but I'm presuming that if they could have a suite, then it would be legal. So that's why they're proposing two parking spaces in the garage and the additional suite parking.
Because normally on these, it says whether they are planning to put a suite in or not, and neither of these had that information. So I just assumed that they weren't going to put them in. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Zrillow.
Question for staff about garages. Is there ever, when we talk about affordability, and these are an excellent location, so close to the elementary school and right on a transit line. Was there any discussion about keeping these a little bit more affordable by not having an actual garage? Like, have we ever talked about that? Just out of interest, is that ever a discussion that happened? Where the garage could be built later if they wanted to invest that money?
Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Good question. And I'll turn to Michael in a second, whether there was that specific discussion with the applicant. I don't believe so, but just by way of sort of a broader response. At one time, there used to be carports that were either built into houses or carports at the back. And what we've seen is a trend away from that in the market. I guess prop owners prefer the security and privacy, I guess, of having an enclosed, lockable garage. So we don't see carports these days in applications for either attached or separate structures with residential housing. Now, whether there was specific discussion around this point with the applicant, I know, Michael, were you privy to that?
Mr. Dolewal.
Through your worship, the garages are proposed by the applicant. They're not a zoning bylaw requirement. It's their decision to park these cars in a garage.
I just find it interesting. I'm just thinking about Calgary. I remember when Calgary kind of did a little bit more affordable communities. They didn't do the garages. They left that up to the purchasers after, just for affordability. Anyway, just a thought. Thanks.
Now, there's no development permit required for this project. Once it's zoned, they could build something different from this, and it could have a garage or not a garage, all within the decision of the owner. Okay, back to the, are there any speakers to this item? Any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item five is an application to amend the zoning bylaw in order to rezone the property at 3419 Victoria Drive from RS2 One Family Suburban Residential to RS7 Small Village Single Family Residential. It's bylaw number 4638.
Mr. Dolewal.
The subject site is located on the north side of Victoria Drive, west of Toronto Street and Lee Elementary School. And just to the east of the site we were just considering, the site is 748 square meters in size and located within the Lower Height Creek Neighborhood Plan area. Zoning on the site is RS2 One Family Residential. The subject site and the surrounding lands in Coquitlam to the west and north are designated Small Village Single Family. The land to the east is designated School, and the lands to the south in Porco, Coquitlam are designated General Urban. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RS7 Small Village Single Family in conformance with the official community plan designation to facilitate subdividing the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending second, third, second and third readings to bylaw number 4638, 2015. We're not recommending fourth reading for this one to finalize the road dedications that are required.
Okay. Are there any speakers to this item? Any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Counselor Hodge.
Just a technical question, just looking at the addresses here and recognizing that, we won't go backwards, but going forward. What would the address be if we put two lots here? We've got 17 next door, and this is 19. Will this one then become 19 and 21? How is that going to work? I just thought of that, but we can't go back, but I'm just sort of looking at this, just wondering how that works.
Solve this one for us, please, Mr. Dolewal.
Through your worship, with the increased density in northeast Coquitlam, addressing is being reviewed. And we'll be thinking of a solution with these four houses and potentially even more on this block being subdivided, but at this moment, I don't know what the address exactly would be.
Okay. Okay, I guess. Okay, just, I was curious. Thank you.
So, and obviously we best to solve that, nice catch, Counselor Hodge, I mean, best to solve that before they're developed. And so if, since the numbers to the east aren't in use along Victoria, it might be appropriate to grab both of these and give us a bit of flexibility and a bit of breathing room. Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, you're correct, your worship. We really avoid, and I don't think it's been for decades that we use the AMB labeling for addresses. And as Michael said, we've challenged for a while with the addressing, the city's addressing system when it's applied to northeast Coquitlam, particularly as we get into these, the densities of the plans envisioned. So we are working on that, trying to come up with a new game plan for the area in terms of addressing. But in the meantime, we make it work in a reasonable, logical way.
Okay, we count on you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, finally, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item number six is an application to amend the zoning bylaw in order to rezone the property at 960 Stewart Avenue from RS1 One Family Residential to RT1 Two Family Residential. This is bylaw number 4630.
Declare a conflict.
Through your worship and council.
Ms. Dablar.
I'm Dablar, planning technician, here to present item number six for 960 Stewart Avenue. The subject site is located on the south side of Stewart Avenue, west of Lublue Street. The site and the surrounding area is designated Neighborhood Attached Residential within the Millardville Neighborhood Plan. Zoning on the site and to the north, south, east, and west is RS1 One Family Residential. The site presently contains a single dwelling unit. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property to RT1 Two Family Residential in conformance with the city's official community plan designation to facilitate subdivision of the existing lot into two single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending all readings to bylaw 4630.
Okay. Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Next item, item seven is an application to amend the official community plan and the zoning bylaw in order to revise land use designation and zoning of 95 Schooner Street. These are bylaws number 4594 and 4595.
The subject site is located south of United Boulevard in the southwest Coquitlam Area Plan, east of the Hard Rock Casino. The site and land to the south are zoned M2 Industrial Business. Land to the east is zoned C6 Casino Commercial. Land to the west and north are zoned B1 Business Enterprise. The land use, the subject site and the site to the south are designated Industrial. Land to the north and west are designated Business Enterprise. Land to the east is designated General Commercial. The applicant is requesting to redesignate the site to Business Enterprise and rezone the site to B1 Business Enterprise to facilitate office uses within the existing building. Staff are recommending second, third, fourth, and final readings to OCP Amendment Bylaw number 4594, 2015, and second, third, fourth, and final readings to rezoning bylaw 4595, 2015.
Mr. Dolewal. I'm tempted to ask how long you've been with the company, because I'm trying to remember the history of this site. This was originally built as an office building.
That is correct, and as part of the industrial zone review, we've consolidated all of our zones down to three. There used to be nine, and as part of the consolidation, the B1 zone gives the most office uses to industrial properties. So the applicant is requesting the rezoning and redesignation to bring their casino-oriented business, I mean, office uses in one consolidated building in Coquitlam. So the current M2 business, industrial business zone only permits the business uses that are in conjunction with an industrial use, and they're trying to, they currently don't operate the building in the way that they will be in the future.
Yeah, and yet, yet the office occupancy that was originally in there wasn't associated with industrial use either. It's partly in homes, I expect.
Yeah, we allowed retail sales offices. It was one of these quirky zones in the many uses we permitted formerly in the business, I mean, in the industrial zones.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? Any speakers to this item? The third and final time, any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Mr. Clerk.
The over-under was under an hour. Item number eight is an application to amend the zoning, I didn't mean that just in conjunction with the casino application. Item number eight is an application to amend the zoning bylaw in order to accommodate a site-specific text amendment for those properties located at 943, 947, 949, 951, and 953 Sherwood Avenue. This is bylaw number 4633.
The subject site contains five sites located south of Low Heat Highway and west of IKEA. The sites are currently zoned M1 General Industrial and have an industrial land use designation. As part of the industrial zone review completed last year, the site to the south at 110 Woolridge Street was rezoned CS1 Service Commercial. As a result of this rezoning, the rear setback requirements were inadvertently changed for the subject properties from zero meters to now 7.6 meters. Staff are proposing a text amendment to the zoning bylaw for these five properties, changing their rear setback requirement from 7.6 meters back to zero meters, as it was prior to the industrial zone review. Staff are recommending second, third, fourth, and final readings to zoning text amendment bylaw number 4633, 2015.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Counselor Zrillow.
Well, this was an interesting one. Some questions about the future, so if we could go back to the picture that showed the the potential for zero lot lines. So we've changed the zoning on the white-roofed building there, the Woolridge. Correct?
Through your worship, that is correct.
Okay, and so then the people in the yellow, or the businesses in the yellow, they're now also changed, and they have to have a 7.6 setback? Like, I'm trying to understand who's being, the north, the north units are being impacted by a setback that resulted from a rezone on the south end of the property?
Through your worship, previously, the white-roofed building had an industrial zoning, and when two industrial zone properties are adjacent each other, the rear setback used to be zero meters.
So I guess my concern when I saw this was, okay, that's fine, so we're gonna, we're gonna make an exception here for these properties to the north, but what happens in 10 years from now? Or what happens if the person with the white roof, the south building in Woolridge, wants to make some changes? Like, are we opening up more issues later by having these zero lot lines? Because we're basically making an exception to a zero lot line of two potentially industrial properties backing onto each other. And I hear for right now, it's working. There's a hedge, and it's fine. But what happens if one of these two property owners or one of these six property owners wants to redevelop?
Your worship, perhaps I can offer some observations before handing it back to Michael. It is true that, as Michael said, where there's the two industrial zone properties adjacent, there's a common zero lot line, real lot line. But by virtue of the zoning or rezoning of, what is it, the KMS Tools property there, right across from IKEA, to better reflect its operation, and that was within, with consultation of that property under that business operation. So the CS1 zone was felt to be more appropriate. It was then later discovered when the subject properties were being assembled and marketed that, whoops, you know, by virtue of changing the zoning of the property to the south, now all of a sudden they have this additional setback requirement. I would note that the KMS building, it's a busy place. It's kind of a quasi-industrial look and feel to it. I think it's a well-established operation. It's a pretty solid building there. I think it's going to be there for a while. And if in time there is redevelopment, like in that 10-year timeframe that Counselor Zrillow was thinking about, they too may want to redevelop and take advantage at that point to fully utilize the site. And they may be looking at a reduced setback on their north side to fully utilize their property as well, so I don't think it's going to be problematic, given the existing character of the, in use of the building to the south. It's quite industrial, and if in time there is redevelopment, I think they would probably be looking at taking advantage of those opportunities to fully utilize a lot and go as far to the north as possible. I.e., they probably want to reduce that north setback to the greatest extent possible.
Well, I have a hard time with this one, because, I mean, it's all speculation at this point. And I'm just wondering if this is going to set precedent for others to come forward and ask for leniencies, variances, exceptions for their setbacks. I totally get it, that these landowners to the north want to maximize their property values, but I just, you know, this is the dangers of just making zoning changes and creating a bunch of exceptions. So I'm having a really tough time with this one. Maybe I could get some information about the M1 to the left. What is the, what are the setback regulations for the M1 to the left?
Through your worship, the M1 to the left is abiding to the south and other industrial zone properties, so they can all go to zero meters. As well, the KMS Tools building, the CS1 zone, white-roofed building, will always have the option to go to zero meters. The zone permits that property to go up to the north property line. So no development rights are impacted to the white-roofed building.
Okay, so is there another option for zoning for the north properties, 943, 947, 949? Is there another zoning option that already gets, lets them have the zero lot line without an exception?
Through your worship, not without an OCP amendment to another designation.
And is it worth us going through those steps so that it's done properly?
Through your worship, depending on the uses of the building, it would be a greater change and might make these uses that are currently industrial uses non-conforming. This is the, through staff's opinion, this is the solution that would have came if we had caught it during the industrial review process, because we weren't trying to restrict anyone's development rights during that process.
Hard one. Okay, thank you.
If I could, your worship, again, just, council may recall, there was a party that recently came forward, I think the council and committee, with a proposal to site a youth recreation center just a couple doors to the west. So the last time I was down in that neck of the woods, I drove up that street. First time I've actually driven down Sherwood and walked around it. You get a view from Low Heat, you get a bit of a sense when you drive by on Low Heat, but if you go onto that street and have a close look at those properties, it's quite an assortment there. There's a mix of old Um, I, there's a mix of older residential buildings, I'm not sure just what's going on there. Um, there's industrial buildings, which I think are probably the highest and best use, and appropriate use for this time, but even some of those, it's, 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 it's older, older building stock, let's just put it that way. So, um, again, I understand Counselor Zerillo's concerns regarding the setbacks and having to come back and make these changes, um, though I, I think ultimately, the initiative that's driving that, looking at these properties, clearing those properties, redeveloping those properties, will bring some real improvement to that section of Sherwood Street.
Okay, thank you. Sir, you have to take the microphone. Why don't you step up to the podium here? It doesn't look like a microphone right in front of you, it's a black bar, but it is actually is a microphone, and there's thousands of people at home watching.
Okay, thanks so much. My name is Graham Clark, I'm a listing agent with Sutton Group, uh, we're two of these properties on, on Sherwood.
And you could give us an address?
Yes, uh, nine four seven and nine four nine.
Thank you.
And I put together the proposal for the, uh, text amendment, uh, got in the neighbors signed up to do that. We found out, uh, early on in our process of the listing, we had some, uh, potential purchasers, and we found that we weren't able to finalize those deals, because they found that now with M, uh, with the KMS Tools rezoning, which is another matter in itself, it was, the neighbors, my clients and none of the neighbors on Sherwood knew that that rezoning took place. There was no notification, there was no signs on KMS Tools. Uh, it was done under the authority of a consolidation, and neighbors received that letter, but they didn't know that under that letter of consolidation of industrial zonings, it was giving you the authority to uplift the value of KMS Tools property in the millions of dollars, while reducing perhaps by about forty percent the value of my client's property. Uh, up until then, there was no problem. Essentially, what, what that rezoning has done is taken off, on a thirty-three-foot lot, eight hundred and twenty-five feet, a buildable area, which, in normal course of events, isn't a problem, only that the lane that is shown on the city maps is in fact a drainage ditch, so you can't have real access. If it was, if the lane was there, we wouldn't be having this discussion, because my clients wouldn't care if they had a twenty-five-foot setback or not. But when you have a, a thirty-three-foot lot, then you have to build access to a rear portion of your property that you can't build on, but you, you can see that you don't have much to work with. So, uh, that's why, um, we put in this, uh, request for a text amendment, just to take us back to where we were before, nothing else. It's, uh, like I said, we, we wouldn't be here at all if you hadn't used a method of rezoning properties, uh, and not going through the due process. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? And third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item in the public hearing closed. It'll, uh, take about seven or eight minutes to reconfigure recording instruments, and we'll start a council meeting to deal with these items and others.